Now we're ready.
Hi. Why do we?
To the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can we please stand for a moment of silence for Jimmy Carter, one of our former presidents and very beloved, and also for our military serving here and overseas? Thank you. On this Tuesday, January 7th, 2025, I'd like to welcome everyone to the Warmestor Board of Supervisors. At this time, I would like to defer to Mr. Randy Flagler, our solicitor.
How do I turn this on?
Just start speaking.
It's on.
Okay, it's on. I forget, I never know which answer.
It's been a long time.
Yeah, more so you gotta turn it on here. You don't have to. Anyway, Happy New Year, everyone. Prior to this meeting, we met an executive session. We discussed personnel matters, various litigation matters, labor negotiation matters, and real estate matters. And at this time, I need to call for a for the election of officers. I need to, as a temporary chair, I call for the election of Chair of the Board of Supervisors. Is there a motion for that?
I have a motion. I'd like to vote motion, Mr. Ken Hayes, to be Chair. May I have a second? Or you do that.
No, no, you're fine, you're fine.
I'll second. Judy?
Any other nominations? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Unanimous? Congratulations.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, the floor is yours.
All right.
Do you use musical chairs here?
Musical chairs. Thank you for the nomination, Kathy. I'm humbled and honored, as always.
You're welcome.
All right, so next point of election, or nominations, I'm sorry, election of officers. I'd like to, is there a motion for Vice Chair?
Yes, I'd like to nominate Kathy Frescatore for Vice Chair.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Questions or comments? Is there another nomination? All right, being none, let's call a question. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Chair votes aye. Motion carries five zero. All right, thank you very much. At this time, we'll have swearing in of our new tax collector. The Honorable Chris O'Neil will preside this. We're gonna do it right here, right, Chris?
We can do it right down here.
Okay, thank you.
Congratulations, and who's gonna hold a Bible for you?
That's my father.
Please place your left hand on the Bible and raise your right hand. I, Nicole Ranier.
I, Nicole Ranier.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this common law.
And the Constitution of this common law.
And that I will discharge.
And that I would discharge.
The duties of my office.
The duties of my office.
As tax collector.
As tax collector.
In Warmestor Township, Bucks County.
In Warmestor Township, Bucks County.
With fidelity.
With fidelity.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
I'm so happy for them. It's done.
Congratulations, best of luck.
Great job, Chris.
All right, we're gonna take a short recess so the family can get some photos. Dark in there, did they leave? Maybe they thought we were done.
Oh my gosh, they're in the dark. It's not coming back on.
She wants the cat.
All right. Let's call the meeting back to order. Nicole, congratulations. We know there's big shoes to fill, but you will do a fantastic job. We're certain of it, so good luck. All right, we're gonna have a public comment, first public comment, on agenda items only. Is there any public comment? Okay, being none, we'll move on to the appointment of Township officials. So Treasurer, is there a motion for Treasurer?
I'd like to make a motion for John Ranier. Rainy.
I'll second.
All right, motion made by Judy Hoover, seconded by Kathy.
Yes.
All right, any other any other nominations? All right, we will close nominations and call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Chair votes aye. Motion carries five oh. Congratulations, John. All right. I'll, if you don't mind, colleagues, I'll make a motion to nominate Tom Scott as our Assistant Treasurer, because I know how much he enjoys that position.
And I'd like to second that, because he loves it so much.
All right, any other nominations? Okay, we'll close nominations and call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Your vote doesn't count. Tom, motion carries five zero, unfortunately.
Abstention.
Abstentions. No abstentions. Just Toms. All right.
His was a no vote.
Exactly. One second here, this script is a little convoluted there. Township Secretary. Is there a motion for Township Secretary?
I'd like to nominate Judy.
Judy Hoover?
Judy Hoover, yes.
Is there a second?
I'll second. Thank you. Thank you both.
Any other nominations? All right, we'll close nominations and call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All abstentions? Chair votes aye. Motion carries five oh. Thank you. All right, Assistant Township Secretary. I would like to make this motion. We'll appoint Tom Scott again as Assistant Township Secretary.
I'll second it again.
Any other nominations? It's your lucky day, Tom. All right, let's call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries five zero. I think you're about off the hook now, Tom. Township Solicitor. Motion for Township Solicitor.
I'd like to make a motion for Randy Flagler and Associates.
Can I ask you just to make it a point? I thank you very much.
Okay.
Flagler and Associates.
Flagler and Associates, I'm sorry.
I'll second that.
Okay, any other nominations? Close the nominations and call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries, Chair votes aye. Motion carries five zero. All right. Alternate counsel. Is there a motion for alternate counsel?
I'd like to nominate Robert Repko of the firm Repko Law as our alternate counsel.
I'll second.
Second.
Okay, any other nominations? Let's close nominations and call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The Chair will abstain, and we'll note in our minutes the reason why. So motion carries four zero one.
Yeah, thanks. For the public, there was a question like, why would you do that? If we have a conflict, for example. It doesn't happen very often, but if we were to have a conflict, you wouldn't have to appoint someone. You automatically have someone appointed, and that's the reason why you do that.
That's for the alternate counsel.
Right.
So if Flagler and Associates has a a conflict, then Mr. Repko would represent us. Okay. Township Labor Council. Is there a motion?
I'd like to nominate Mark Fried and the firm Curtin Heffner.
Okay, second?
I'll second.
Okay, any other nominations? Let's close the nominations and call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Abstentions? Chair votes aye. Motion carries five zero. Let's pass. H Township Engineer.
I'd like to nominate Craig Kennard of the firm Gilmore and Associates. Actually, was there, oh, I'm, yes. That is correct, yes.
Second?
Second.
Second, all right, any other nominations? All right, we'll close nominations, call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Abstentions? Sorry?
That's for Township Engineer.
Township Engineer. Chair votes aye. Motion carries five zero. All right, Traffic Engineer.
I'd like to make a motion for Leslie Bogdanoff of the firm Gilmore and Associates, as Traffic Engineer.
Second?
I'll second that.
Go ahead, Chuck, had it.
Okay, any other nominations? Let's close nominations, call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Chair votes aye. Motion carries five zero. Township Planner.
I'd like to nominate Judy Stern-Golstein as Township Planner.
Second?
Second.
Any other nominations? Close nominations, call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Chair votes abstentions? And Chair votes aye. Motion carries five zero. All right, moving along to where this is why everyone's here, right?
No. Good citizenship.
All right, Vacancy Board. I'll motion, I'll make a motion. So we'll appoint Barbara Patrick, Barb Patrick.
I'll second.
Second? Okay, any other nominations?
Four. I'm sorry. Yes, I'd like to nominate Barb Patrick. I'm not sure.
We're.
Oh, okay, okay, okay.
Yeah, we're good. So any other nominations? All right, we'll close nominations and call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Abstentions? Chair votes aye. Motion carries five zero. Zoning Hearing Board, one position.
I'd like to nominate Steve Wojciechowski.
I'll second.
Okay, Judy, second. Any other nominations? Let's close the nominations, call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Abstentions? Chair votes aye. Motion carries five zero. Zoning Hearing Board, alternate.
I would like to nominate Mary McGee.
Second? Okay. Any other nominations? All right, let's close nominations and call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Abstentions? Chair votes aye. Motion carries five zero. Municipal Authority Board Member, one position.
I'd like to nominate Ken Hayes.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any other nominations? All right, we'll close that. Call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Chair votes aye. Motion will carry five zero. Thank you very much. I appreciate that appointment. Planning Commission.
I'd like to nominate Jim Crossen.
I'll second that. Any other nominations? Let's close that, call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Chair votes aye. Motion carries five zero. Planning Commission, alternate.
Like to nominate Henry Taylor.
Second.
Any other nominations? Okay, we'll call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Chair votes aye. Motion carries five zero. Library Board, four positions.
Okay, I'd like.
We can do them all at once, correct?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Yes.
I'd like to nominate Jerry Chudrow, Michelle Squishamara, Lorraine Brown, and Jeff Brown.
Who?
Jeff Brown.
Jeff Brown?
I'll second that.
Is there someone else?
Well, there's, did he submit a letter of intent?
No, I didn't see it.
I don't see it.
I don't have that one marked down.
He was just appointed last year. I don't think you need to do more than three, because he has a three-year term already, but somebody said four, so I'd.
Oh.
So there is, so there will be a vacant position. Right now, we have three people that put send in a letter of intent.
Yeah, his is vacant. He's continuing his three.
Yeah, so he's not a vacant.
And you don't need to.
He doesn't even be appointed.
Right.
He's serving the term.
Right, he's still in his term.
He's still serving the original term.
All right, so there was a second, right?
Yes.
So it's Jerry Chudrow, Michelle Squishamara, and Lorraine Brown, correct?
Jeff Brown.
Yes.
Okay, so any other nominations? All right, let's close nominations and call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Abstentions? Chair votes aye. Motion carries five zero. Construction Board of Appeals. I'll nominate Kenneth Lorenz.
I'll second that.
Any other nominations? Let's close that, call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Abstentions? Chair votes aye. Motion carries five zero. Golf Advisory Committee. Oh, hold on, there's a couple more people here. Yeah, there's two more down here. All right. All right, I'll nominate, I'll motion to appoint three members to the Golf Advisory Committee, Francis Foley, Larry McHugh, and Michael Perlstein. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. Any other nominations? All right, let's call the question.
Did he say Mark Kleinhardt?
Who they are, I'm sorry.
Francis Foley, Larry McHugh, Michael Perlstein.
Thank you.
What about Mark Kleinhardt? Is there room for him to be on there?
There's.
That's coming up.
Oh, okay, sorry, sorry.
That's all right.
I mean, you can nominate them, but.
That's the second one.
There's three.
Yeah.
Okay, I got confused, I'm sorry.
All right. So let's close the nominations and call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Chair votes aye. Motion carries five zero. All right. Golf Advisory Committee. Advisor, Citizen Advisor.
I'd like to nominate Robert McCracken and Mark Kleinhardt.
Second.
There's two more.
Okay.
So, this is my favorite meeting of the year, by the way. So who did you, Mark Kleinhardt, Robert McCracken, and then we have, hold on, there's a couple more here.
Okay, tell us the names.
Hold on, I'm working on it. We have Jim Tate. Then there's a Martin fellow here. Let me see where that is. Dave Martin. And then there's a Bob Kettler, but we don't have room. So I nominate Dave Martin and Jim Tate, along with Kathy's.
Right, we need a second.
I'll second them.
For all four. So that'd be for Robert McCracken, Mark Kleinhardt, Jim Tate, and Dave Martin.
Second, any other nominations? All right, let's close that and call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Chair votes aye. Motion carries five zero.
Stage one.
Environmental Advisory Council.
I'd like to nominate Don Glider and Linda Chero.
I'll second that.
Second.
Any others?
I think everybody else is.
They're the only two that applied, so.
Yeah. So if anybody else is interested, please apply.
All right, so there's no other nominations. Let's close that and call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Abstentions? Chair votes aye. Motion carries five zero. All right, only four more pages. Parks and Rec Advisory Committee. Two-year term.
I'd like to nominate Katie Quinn Buck.
Second by Judy?
Yes.
All right. Any others? Close the nominations, call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Chair votes, abstentions? Chair votes aye. Motion carries five zero. All right, Parks and Rec Commission Citizens Advisors, one-year term.
I'd like to nominate Henry Taylor and Monae Davis. We also have two more positions open without letters. Anybody's interested, please apply.
I'll second.
Thank you. Henry Taylor and Monae Davis.
All right, being as there's no more applications, we'll close that and call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Abstentions? Chair votes aye. Motion carries five zero. Okay. Pension Investment Advisory Committee.
I'd like to nominate John Prevolis and Karen Crigger.
Second.
Second? Okay, again, they're the only two that applied. We'll close nominations, call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Abstentions? Chair votes aye. Motion carries five zero. All right. Pension Investment Advisory Committee, one position, Finance Director. I nominate John Ramey.
I second that.
Put your head up. Stop hiding on that wall.
No hiding, no hiding.
All right, any other nominations? Let's close that, call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Abstentions? Chair votes aye. Motion carries five zero. Thank you. Now we go to the Union Members. If I may be allowed, I'd like to nominate Andrew Vodarame, Ann Duffy, and Jean Estorito. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, let's, any other nominations? Let's close that, call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Abstentions? Chair votes aye. Motion carries five zero. All right. Two non-voting members to the Ben Wilson Senior Center.
I'd like to nominate Jane Lynch. We also have an open spot if anybody's interested in that, too. Ma'am?
I'll have a second.
Go right ahead.
Second.
Second?
Thank you.
All right. So being as there's no other applicants, we'll close that nomination and call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Abstentions? Chair votes aye. Motion carries five zero. All right. Bladed Property Review Committee, two positions.
I'd like to nominate Henry Taylor.
I'd like to nominate Jim Crossen.
I'll second both.
Once again, these are the only two applicants, I believe.
It is.
But we will ask for other, I think, no, I think there is one more. So we're gonna ask for any other nominations. All right, being none, we'll close that and call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Abstentions? Chair votes aye. Motion carries five zero.
Congratulations to all of those who applied, and thank you for wanting to serve your community. We really appreciate it, and congratulations.
Yes, we appreciate the community involvement. All right. Supervisor Liaisons and Members. We'll start with the liaison to the Planning Commission.
I would like to nominate Judy Hoover.
I will second that. Any other nominations? Let's close that, call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Abstentions? Chair votes aye. Motion carries five zero. Thank you. Zoning Hearing Board, I'd like to nominate Chuck Haybuck.
I'll second that.
Okay, any others? Let's close that, call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Abstentions? Chair votes aye. Motion carries five zero. Supervisor Liaison to the Municipal Authority, I'd like to nominate Kathy Frescatore.
I'll second that.
Okay, any others? Close that, call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Abstentions? Chair votes aye. Motion carries five zero. Library Board.
I would like to nominate Judy Hoover.
I'll second that.
Second? All right. Any others? Okay, we'll close that, call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Abstentions? Chair votes aye. Motion carries five zero. Environmental Advisory Council.
I'd like to nominate Janice Charlton.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
All right. Any other nominations? Let's close that, call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Abstentions? Chair votes aye. Motion carries five zero. Golf Advisory Committee. I'd like to nominate Chuck Haybuck.
I'll second that.
Any others?
I can advise at golf.
We know you can.
Right, John?
Look out, Mike. He's gonna have to learn how to replace his divots. All right, let's call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Abstentions? Chair votes aye. Motion carries five zero. All right. Liaison to Parks and Rec.
I'd like to nominate Kathy Frescatore.
I'll second that. Any others? All right, let's close that, call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Abstentions? Chair votes aye. Motion carries five zero. All right. One Supervisor Liaison to the Ben Wilson Senior Center.
I'd love to nominate Judy Hoover.
I'll second that. Any others?
You have your hands full.
All right, let's close that, call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Abstentions? Chair votes aye. Motion carries five zero. All right. Pension Investment Advisory Committee.
I'd like, oh, go ahead.
I nominate Ken Hayes.
I'll second that.
Okay, can we do both of them at once?
Yeah.
Can I nominate Janice Charlton?
I'll second that.
Thank you.
All right, let's close that, unless there's other nomination. All right, now we'll close it, and we'll call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Abstentions? Chair votes aye. Motion carries five zero. All right. Establish the Township Depositories. Is there a motion to designate First National Bank of Newtown as a Township Depository for calendar year 2025?
Motion.
Or other institutions to invest in as may be deemed necessary for the best possible interest rates, including Unives Bank, M&amp;T Bank, TD Bank, Pennsylvania Local Government Investment Trust, or PLIGET, PNC Bank, TD Ameritrade Trust Company, and US Bank. Motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Okay. Any questions or comments on this? Do I need to ask the public for this, or yes?
No, well, I mean, you can ask.
I can ask. Any questions or comments from the public?
You can ask.
Okay, let's call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
We asked for questions, so this is agenda items, right? We asked for public comment.
Yeah, that's right, this was agenda, and we did ask for public comment.
Yeah, so it's fine.
Okay. Abstentions? Chair votes aye. Motion carries five zero. All right. Treasurer's bond. Is there a motion to set the Treasurer's bond and Assistant Treasurer's bond at $2 million each, correct?
That's right.
Is there a motion?
Motion.
I'll second.
All right, questions or comments from the board? Let's call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Chair votes aye. Motion carries five zero. Establish the regular schedule of public meetings. Before we do that, I'd like to make one minor adjustment to the, what was it, the February meeting, correct? January. January. January's. We're gonna go, I'm sorry, you're right. We're putting in February 13th instead of February 6th. Correct. Thank you. To run the ad for the whole year. So the meetings will be held first and third.
February 13th?
Correct.
And?
February 20th. So it's January 6th, January 16th. February 13th is the only change to the schedule.
Got it.
First and third Thursday.
Other than that, it's the first and third Thursdays of the month. Okay? Is there a motion?
I thought, excuse me, I thought there was a question about January 6th, that we were going to just go to the 16th.
Yes, I am.
Well, it's already on.
January 16th is on here. January 6th was yesterday.
Yeah.
January 16th is on here.
I'm looking at the wrong chart.
It's listed, yes.
She has a different, she has a different schedule.
It's, it's the reorg, it's, it's something about it.
It says reorg.
Favorite meeting.
Plus we're closing on.
They have to reorg. Just to recover. All right, so first and third Thursday of every month, except for February, which will be February 13th and February 20th. Okay, we'll establish that. There was, was there a motion?
I'll make the motion, I'll second.
Second, okay. Any other questions or comments from the board? All right, let's call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, abstentions, chair votes aye, motion carries five zero. All right, Set and Affirm the We're also, um, we'll be advertising all the other boards and their meeting schedules as well. For the year. Mm-hmm, okay. Thank you, Tom. Set and affirm the calendar year 2025 Non-Collective Boarding Agreement Township Holidays. Just getting an update. Non-Collective Boarding Unit Holidays. This may be amended from time to time by motion or look resolution from the board. Uh, right now, we have New Year's Day, President's Day, Memorial Day, Labor Day, Thanksgiving Day, Christmas Day. I did not read them in order, Martin Luther King Day, Good Friday, and Penn State, Veterans Day, and the day after Thanksgiving, after reorg.
Motion?
Second? Okay, any questions or comments? Let's call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, abstentions, chair votes aye, motion carries five zero. All right, another important position. Delegate to the PSETS Educational Conference, Voting Delegate.
I would love to nominate Judy Hoover.
I'll second that.
You're very good at that.
I like it.
I know.
Yeah, that's an important, um,
It is.
There is a lot of stuff that comes up that we have to vote yea or nay on, so
She really pays attention to what they're passing to, and so she's the best candidate for that. We're all being honest here, right, guys?
All right.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second?
All right, any other questions or comments?
You did, okay.
Okay, let's call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, abstentions, chair votes aye, motion carries five zero. All right, New Business. Let me get, let me get to the consent agenda here. All right, we're going to start with the consent, consent agenda. So, Consider Approval Resolution 2025 dash 01. Excuse me, Update to Warmest Township Fee Schedule Subdivision of Land Development, Zoning Permit, and Building Permit Applications. Consider Approval Resolution 2025 dash 02 Setting the Police Officer's Contribution to the Pension Fund. Consider Approval of Resolution 2025 dash 03 Setting the At-Will and Plea Contributions to the Pension Fund. Uh, Consider Approval Resolution 2025 dash 04 Setting Warmest Township's Contribution to the Defined Compensation Pension Fund. Consider Approval Resolution 2025 dash 05 Setting ASME Local 2289 Employee Contributions to the Pension Fund. Consider Approval Resolution 2025 dash 06 Setting ASME Local 1598 Employee Contributions to the Pension Fund. Consider Resolution 2025 dash 07 Authorizing the Destruction of Certain Golf Course Reports and Receipts With the Date Born before December 31st, 2017. Uh, Consider Change Order Number Two for Public Works Above Ground Storage Tank Contract CN 2023 dash 03 To Extend the Contract Times by an Additional 155 Days And Increase the Contract Amount $33,639.14. And Consider 550 Davisville Road, Davisville Hosery Mill Release Number One From the Escrow Account in the Amount of $22,850. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second. Second.
All right, any questions or comments? I mean, these are pretty much standard. We have to do it every year at reorg, setting our pension contributions. We need a little more time to finish the, uh, the ASTs. Other than that, it's pretty dry. Any questions or comments from the public?
They're all leaving.
All right, let's call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, abstentions, chair votes aye, motion carries five zero. All right, Who's our new treasurer? Chuck, you can read it. Do you have it?
Yes. Like to move, uh, make a motion to, uh, for the bill listed, listed date December 19th, 2024, an amount of $2,221,806. And the supplemental bill lists dated December 31st, 2024, in the amount of $756,823.59 With grand total of $2,978,629.56.
Second?
I'll second.
Okay, questions or comments from the board? Questions or comments from the public? Let's call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, abstentions, chair votes aye, motion carries five zero. It's nice to pay our bills. John, you don't have anything for us tonight, right? Okay. Uh, public comment for non-agenda items. Anyone going once, going twice, okay, that's closed. All right, Managers' Announcements of Upcoming Meetings. Tom, you're up.
Well, as if we weren't all confused enough about the meeting schedule, let me jump right in.
Thank you.
With both feet. We are going to have our next meeting next Thursday night in this very room.
Okay.
At seven o'clock, thank you.
All right, Supervisor's Comments. You want to go first?
Sure, I'd be happy to. It's nice that we have, uh, weather, weather is finally here. We'd like to thank our Public Works guys for doing such a nice job cleaning up. Just a reminder that we lay our basketball poles down when it snows and get our cars off the street to make it easier for our guys that are out there working. Please be safe and drive carefully. There's a lot of duty toes coming out, so please be careful, watch what you're doing, watch out for others.
Chuck?
Yeah, I'd like to congratulate Nicole on her new appointed position and, uh, best of luck with it. Big shoes to fill. And I'd like to congratulate everyone on the positions that they, uh, appointed to tonight, and, uh, everyone have a happy, safe, healthy New Year.
Judy?
Yes, thank you all for coming. As you know, you can't have a democracy without citizenship participation. So, I really appreciate the people that come here and pay attention to what their township is doing. And I thank the Public Works for how they took care of the streets yesterday and today, and hope that everyone's careful while they're out there driving.
I'd like to thank Public Works, but also the Municipal Authority for helping out with the snow removal. They did a darn good job. So, I'd like to give them a, a big shout out. Also, what I would like to thank all of my colleagues and our professionals for a very productive meeting tonight. We accomplished a lot of work, and we appointed a lot of volunteers to help out in our community. So, thank you very much.
Thanks, Kathy. Yes, thanks to everyone. Nicole, thank you for your service, and everyone else who volunteered. We really do appreciate your input. Um, just to piggyback on the, um, the Public Works, those guys, those guys are dedicated, they do a great job. And, um, when you call with a question or comment to our, our Public Works Director or whoever's manning the phones, I would request that you do it without profanity and threats and every other thing under the sun. When, I've been here for 25 years in this township, and I know after the first year that you don't shovel your sidewalk or your driveway apron until the playoff truck comes through. So, there's no need for profanity and blasting our, our Public Works people or the, or the people, um, manning the phones. So, I would just request, uh, to speak the way you would like to be spoken to, um, and that's about it for that. But other than that, Public Works, thank you very much. All right, with that, motion to adjourn.
Motion.
There we go, thank you very much.
And thank you, Chief Donnelly, you drove 1,000 miles today just to be here.
Aw, he loves us.
From Pittsburgh.
Pittsburgh, you've been to the Berg, were you?
The Berg, baby.
The Berg.
Did you bring us a